Good morning. It's great to see each and every one of you. And we will turn it over now to our city clerk.
This is the pre-meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, May 25th. We have approval of minutes from May 18th and May 20th. Appeals, we have requests for Way the North ordinance on June 18th and 19th from 6:00 PM until 2:00 AM on LeShure Road. Mr. Williams?
Absolutely. Here, isolated, my mayor is isolated and been here this couple of years now.
And July 1st from 6:00 PM until 1:00 AM on LeShure. June 18th from 5:30 to 7:00 PM on Angus Drive North.
Oh, that's okay.
May 30th from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM on South Broad Street.
Good question, sir.
May 29th from 7:00 to 10:00 PM on Woodcliff Drive East. Public hearing today, it's a public hearing to declare the structure at 962 Government Street a public nuisance and order it demolished. 904 South Warren Street, 1363 Azalea Road, 5801 Fairfax Road South. Today is a public hearing to fix the cost for demolition of structures at 2066 Gibson Street, 520 Euclid Street, 805 Gargis, 818 Gargis, 3920 Del Monte Court, oh, Delmonte Court, 404 Morgan Avenue.
Oh, Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Could I ask Mr. David Doclock if he can just talk about the Del Monte Court, why it was 9450?
Yes, Mr. Vice President, any questions that you have, I should be able to hear.
Yeah, could you explain why the Del Monte Court was 9450, $9,450?
It has to do with the size of the structure. It was close to 4,000 square feet, if I remember correctly, and this was what the lowest competitive bid would be, so we bid out the process, and that's the lowest qualified bidder, that is the price, plus $200 admin cost. But to answer the question, if I remember correctly, it's due to the debris on site and the size of the structure.
Was it a two-story?
As I recall, yes.
Okay, all right. Just in case the citizen come down and everything. Thank you.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Valerie Longa will be here today regarding the summer reading celebration at the library. Donald Stewart, uh-oh, hold on. Donald Stewart will be here regarding the vacation of the property around the Metro Jail. Frederick Thompson will be here regarding gun violence in our city.
Ms. Clerk, is this the same gentleman who spoke to us last week? I know we had that topic with this group, two people with the group came last week. Is he one of the same gentleman?
No, this is a different person.
Different, different person? Same, same topic, same group?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then we have Reggie Hill discussing former requests made by citizens, allocation of pandemic resources, public safety innovative practices, variant Africa Town initiatives. Sabrina Mass, she wants to call your attention, well, she's heard from several people who have witnessed people removing campaign signs. And then Captain Chad Durant will introduce himself by request from Councilmember Williams.
He's a U.S. Army recruit.
Ordinance is held over 64025, ordinance to rezone property located at 2100 North University Boulevard, east side of North University Boulevard, at the east terminus of Mickey Drive and east terminus of LeBaron Drive South, from R1 to B1. 64026, ordinance to amend and restate Chapter 64 of the city code zoning.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you going to assign this?
Absolutely.
And today, we're going to look at how long to lay this over?
Yes, ma'am. That is absolutely our intention. It'll be assigned, as we've discussed, to a committee of the whole, so that all of us might be present, here and answer questions, and hopefully not rush the process, but also be deliberate in making certain that something so transformative for our city and citizens, that we give it the due diligence it deserves.
How long are we going to hold it over for?
Sir?
How long are we going to hold it over?
We'll have that discussion at 10:30. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Rich?
Since it's going to be, and it's been discussed about, so that's not news necessarily about a committee of the whole, those meetings have to be advertised and they're basically considered council meeting? How do we go about that? Because normally committees, we tell the public and ask them to join us, but it's not, we're not all together. So, do we have a legal opinion on that? I'm just curious, because getting that message out and streamlining that will be important.
The committee meetings and this committee that y'all are going to put together all have to be noticed, just like these council meetings do, or a special meeting or anything like that?
So, when you say special meeting, then when the gavel goes down, that's renumerated too, for our time? Or is that, or, because, you know, we get paid every time we meet, that's not a secret. So, I'm just wondering, is that, would that also be a benchmark too? Or because it's a committee, it's not considered paid time for putting the gavel down?
I would lean towards the committee.
Thank you, pardon?
I'd lean towards the committee answer, but I can look at that.
Could you make sure, because I just wouldn't want to be, do anything incorrect. But thank you for that, appreciate it.
We've held committees of the whole before on different topics, and we've always handled it as a committee meeting.
That's most likely what the answer is.
Yeah, it's just a committee of the whole, as the whole council, rather than a special, like ad hoc or administrative services or whatever committee. It's just everybody's going to be here and sit in as committee.
That, I mean, I just think that's something that needs to be, even the community needs to understand that part. Thank you. Good.
CIP resolutions held over 21357, authorized contract with Williams Power and Signal for construction of traffic signal and ITS upgrades along Government Street. Resolutions held over 01358, authorized inter-agency agreement with the State of Alabama Department of Human Resources for summer youth employment. 08359, approve item-based bid for inverter generators. 08360, approve purchase order to Graybar Electric for LED roadway luminaries. 08364, approve purchase order to Donahue Chevrolet for Chevrolet Tahoe. 08365, approve purchase order to Southern Lighting and Traffic Systems for four traffic video detection systems. 21368, authorized contract renewal with Protech Video for technical technology and consulting services. 21369, authorized contract with Seacor Enterprises for DIP and Cypress Shores ditch mowing. 21370, authorized contract with Macquarie and Williams for construction engineering and inspection for the Three Mile Creek watershed restoration project. 25371, accept a permanent and temporary construction easement from Edith Pinkney for 2019 Drainage Group F Project Driver Street. 31372, authorize the covenant of purpose, use, and ownership with the U.S. Department of Treasury in support of the grant for innovating St. Louis Street. 31373, authorize acceptance of a Gulf of Mexico Energy and Security Act program grant in support of Gulf Quest National Maritime Museum.
Mr. President?
Mr. Vice President?
Madam Clerk, could we go back to 01-358? Ms. Henderson, could you possibly explain to us about this one more time? Exactly what is this?
Sure. This is a reimbursement the State Department of Human Resources is giving to the city of Mobile. So, last year, because of COVID, many of the state's summer jobs programs did not happen. But because we did it remotely with our students, they're extending the opportunity for us to receive those funds again. So, in our budget currently, we have $200,000 for summer youth jobs program. This money is a reimbursement where we can extend that throughout the fall to seniors, juniors and seniors who are in college, and it's a way that we're trying to recruit and retain some of our young people to come back to Mobile and work in some of our companies.
So, this is totally separate from the YES program?
This is an extension of the YES program to extend it to the fall.
And it also include college students?
Yes, so we currently use young people ages 16 to 24, so we already hire them during the summertime, but this is an opportunity to extend those funds through the fall. But we specifically in the fall recruit juniors and seniors who are in college, who are about to graduate and have that opportunity to learn some of the industries that we have and have the industries be able to speak with them, so that they can, you know, have an opportunity to have those young people work in their industries after they graduate.
Are you all still submitting applications, or this is closed?
It is closed this summer. We have hired our 100 young people. They actually will start the first week, I'm sorry, the second week in June after school lets out, but there's always opportunity in the fall. So, we will open that up again in the fall, but that will only be specifically for juniors and seniors who are in college.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Thank you. It has to do with the resolution dealing with Gulf Quest, and it says that the mayor is authorized to sign and the agreements and other documents. Those are not in our packet, so if we could get, you know, a heads up on exactly what this grant is for the museum, Maritime Museum. Thank you.
So, did you have any additional questions beyond what you asked last week? Was there something else?
Just basically, what does it involve? Yeah, because we don't have, we don't know what the agreement is.
Yeah, I can have the document sent over before the 10:30 meeting.
That'd be great. And can you articulate exactly what it involves? What this grant's going towards?
Yeah, sure, so.
Thank you.
So, it's been a week since I've looked at it, so I'm not going to get into the nuts and bolts of it, but long story short, we're resubmitting information from 2019 that had to be, that it just got postponed for whatever reason. And then whenever COVID happened, a lot of the restrictions that were around these grants changed. So, I'll have those documents sent over before 10:30.
Okay.
It seemed like it was something to do with technology and something that you all had had before, the same sort of grant from before, so it's really nothing new, correct?
Yeah, that's right. There's a lot of technology pieces that changed, especially whenever remote learning and remote meetings became more prevalent, some of the guidelines changed for the Gomez applications.
Thank you.
Consent resolutions being introduced for the first time. 4376 through 4385 are declaring structures public nuisances and ordering them demolished and fixing the cost for demolition of said structures.
We're going to hold 4379 over for 30 days. I said 4379, we're going to hold that over for 30 days.
Paul, did you get the resolution, resolution number? Yes, this is Government Street.
Yeah, Government Street.
Yeah, 962 Government.
How long?
30 days. This is, I talked to Levon and Jenny and David earlier, there is a concern about the church.
There is a, there is a great concern throughout our community and the historic development community that want to see this done correctly, and there has been several change in ownership. So, what the purpose of the 30 days is, is to show, is not just to give them 30 days, but for the current owner, along with all interested parties. I mean, that leaves nobody out. The Historic Commission, anybody that is, has got an interest in the fabric, historic fabric of our city, as well as the Downtown Alliance who we heard from, we expect to hear from all of them about how they're changing this path to progress. At the end of 30 days, if it's not significant progress, and I don't know how to measure that, it will just simply be the judgment of the council at that point, whether or not historic, or, excuse me, if significant progress has been made, where we, where we go. But at the end of 30 days, we'll make that decision. Hopefully, all through that 30 days will be updated. If significant progress is made, then there'll be more time or a different declaration, and that could be to simply repair, order it repaired. Thank you.
Mr. President, I hope that the time will come, and when we give the same deference to historical structures all over the city. If it's in District 1, Trinity Gardens, Crichton, it could be 300 years old, it's coming down. But once you get over to another community, we give deference to the age, and we're going to be really careful with it as to not to destroy the historical characters, you know, of the house. We use the bulldozer, we knock them slap down if they're in certain communities, regardless of how old it is. The time should come where we preserve the historical character of every community in the city of Mobile. You don't have to, the neighborhood should not have to be designated a historical neighborhood for us to preserve what is historical. Just saying.
Mr. President? I do not recall one instance where Mr. Richardson has asked us to spare a building where we have failed to spare the building. Now, he has an instance where that's happened. I'd be happy to hear about it.
I'm asking the council, does that give deference? We have professionals on our staff. I have one sitting up here with us today. If a house is to be destroyed, give deference to the age, give deference to the character of the house.
What?
I don't, I don't go out and examine these houses, but we pay professionals to do that. And where you find Trinity Gardens over 100 years old, we have houses people have been living in ever since 400 years. So, we have professionals who can look at the house and see whether or not this house is a historical house. I don't have to go out. I don't think Councilman Mass has been up there trying to examine 962. But the pros go, went out there and examined. I'm telling the pros to do the same thing, so. I just want to say, I have been to 962, and it's in horrendous condition. And I'm leasing some property not too far from it, so I'm dealing with some of the ramifications of that now, and I've heard from citizens probably seven and a half years about the condition of this particular building. Now, as it's told to me, somewhere under all of those, you know, shoddily done additions is a home, somewhere. And there's interest in the community to try to preserve the home and get rid of these additions that came place, that took place in the 60s and 70s. If that's possible, I am amenable to giving them 30 days, 60 days, to come up with a path forward. If it's not possible financially, if there's no one who can step up and say that we're going to take the charge and lead the brigade in saving this particular historic home, then I've got a whole crowd over here who's ready for a bulldozer. So, in deference to, and I have to agree with Mr. Davis on one point, there have been several times, specifically Mr. Richardson, I know I have joined you in giving more time to houses in your community. I think if any member of this council were to ask for additional time on a specific home in response to feedback from the neighborhood, I don't know of anybody up here who wouldn't say give them 30 days, 60 days to try to find a way to salvage this home. Because what we don't want is to tear down and you move from one list, the demolition list, to the next list, which is the weed lane. You just transferring one problem to the other. So, if we can save the home, I think all of us are in favor of doing that, but the community's patience on this particular property is really wearing thin, and I just want to make sure that's known. We have a path forward, I'm agreeable, amenable, let's do it. But I'm hopeful that something concrete and definitive comes out of these next 30 to 60 days.
6386 and 387 are determining appropriations to the Blessing Angels Gifting Tree and the Village of Spring Hill serve a public purpose and approved payment. Resolutions being introduced for the first time. 08388, approve purchase order to Harrows for fertilizer Azalea City Golf Course, $17,373.60. 08389, approve purchase order to Emergency Equipment Professional for ambulance, $157,261.55. 08390, approve purchase order to Furno Washington, Inc. for power ambulance stretcher, $20,759.74. 08391, approve purchase order to Cronus Incorporated for annual renewal subscription, $18,365.28. 08392, approve purchase order to CDW Government LLC for network service, switches, transceivers, and power supplies, $57,050.24. 08393, approve purchase order to CDW Government for government for Microsoft Windows Server software and licenses, $34,076.24. 08394, approve purchase order to forensic vendor for forensic software renewal, $16,600. 08395, 396, 397 are proven purchase orders to UJ Chevrolet for Silverado pickup, $39,005. Yes, sir?
That I am just as pleased as I can be to finally see us buying some vehicles from some local car dealers. I know we go off a bid, some of that is connected with the state, but weekly we buy these vehicles, and they're all over the state. And I'm happy to see in every instance where we're purchasing a vehicle, it appears on this agenda, it's from a local car dealership, so as much of those resources will stay here as possible.
For purchase of a Chevrolet Blazer for $36,180, a Chevrolet Silverado 1500 pickup for $39,095. 13398, authorized change order to the Contract with McElhaney Construction Company for 2019 traffic safety improvements, $32,299.69.
This was the concrete phase of where we were doing some pedestrian crosswalk improvements to put in the ADA ramps, and some of the quantities to get the ADA compliance was greater than what we had initially surveyed, so it was additional concrete work trying to get that ADA compliance. Some of them were Cottage Hill and Hillcrest, and Cottage Hill and Lloyd's Lane and Christopher, the ones we were doing with that project. Some of them were on University, where we were doing some around the university, and then some were related to public safety park, extending some of those sidewalks. But it was mainly to get that ADA compliance, we had to extend some of the quantities.
What are the traffic calming lumps?
We did some repairs on existing lumps. Yeah.
So, that's not producing new ones?
No, it was, some of them get, some of those old rubber ones have worn away, and we've replaced them with concrete, so we've done repairs on some of the existing ones. We usually, we'll try to do a contract like this yearly, where we can go in and do the ADA ramps, where we're trying to do crosswalk improvements, and then also repair existing. And there were some new ones in this contract, but they were not part of the change order. They were initially incorporated into the contract.
So, this is a change order, and it's 169K, or is that?
That's the total.
That's the total.
It was 32 for, or 23 for the change order?
32, 32, too.
Yeah, and he held, he held his prices for us as a reason we were trying to do the change order, because otherwise it would have had to gone out for bid again, and the prices probably would have doubled on it.
And do you know where the new traffic?
We only did one, it was around that Publix in Midtown. There was a side street that is part of the agreement with Publix, got a traffic calming lump, and that's the only.
Oh, that was the rezoning, actually, for medical clinic?
Yeah, yeah. So, that's, that's the only new ones we did.
Appreciate it.
25399, accept a permanent drainage easement from Merchants Alabama LLC for property on Yen Street. 31400, authorize a grant application with Aleah and the Alabama Gulf Coast High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, $27,580, no match. 31401, authorize approval to receive funds from the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, $60,210,000. 6402, approve settlement agreement and release of claims. 08403, approve purchase order to AutoNation for Mobile for Ford F-150 pickup truck, $35,744.
Can we go back to the, the one where we'll accept the, which is a great acceptance, the $60 million from the, from the, I guess it's the fiscal recovery fund? Apparently, we, the council did receive an email message from our finance director.
Yes, your mic on, sorry. The council received information from, about this initiative, which is, like I said, it's an excellent thing for our city, and there are certain requirements. And so, the administration, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but is the administration now lining up what programs they think would be, you know, fit into the equation? Is that how that's working?
Yes. Well, first of all, the 60 million, we didn't get the 60 million. We got the 29 million, they reduced it to 58 million, I believe. And so, we got the first one that's in the bank account, so it's nice to have that. The reason I've been sending that information to you all is because I just, to keep you appraised of the complexity of this, of this document, we've had several meetings so far and discussions about what's covered and what isn't covered, and I'll talk a little bit about this right after the finance approval meeting. But in general, we, we intend to have another, a couple more discussions and meetings about this, just to make sure there's clarity and understanding.
Sure.
Because it is a pretty, it's a big chunk of money, and I think there are some concerns that if we don't do everything right, there's going to be quarterly audits and reporting that's going to be with that. But I think it's, it's pretty evident that the, that the, the act itself is going to cover a lot of things that go beyond just capital improvements. And in fact, I would say out of the four different categories that are being proposed by the government are pretty much.
Permitted.
Permitted. Capital improvements really falls in only one of those categories. So, this is something that we want to, we want to respond to everything, we want input from everybody in the response, because this is something maybe that we're not, I shouldn't say we're not used to, but it's something I think that's different that I've seen since we've been here, you know, households that are disadvantaged, things of that nature. You know, this is one of the four categories, small businesses, industries on tourism, you know, we need to analyze that a little bit more, and any input I think we can get from people relative to those categories would be, would be helpful, and ideas along with that. The premium pay for eligible workers, we don't have anything against that, but I do think there's going to be some more dis- think there's going to be some more discussion about how we go back and identify where is the premium pay eligible and where is it not eligible. And that's going to take some more discussion and more analysis on our part. And then finally, the loss of city revenue. And I think Rebecca talked about this last week, and that is, the revenue, I think, at a high level is really based on a comparison with the year before.
It did better.
In 2020, we did better than the year before, probably, maybe, we're in a small, small percentage of cities, but that's the case. So, we have more work to do to analyze that. And then finally, you know, the water sewer and the broadband infrastructure, that's really what the, we're talking the most with Jim about, and, you know, what are opportunities there to really, you know, take advantage of this twenty-eight million and move forward.
Yep. The MAWS being, you know, not a city agency, but of course, all our constituents drink MAWS water. And when we go in to do road improvements, we often ask them. But if there's funds available, I imagine you're communicating. I would, big time, yeah.
So.
Great.
Mr. President?
We'll keep you posted each week on how we're progressing and keep talking.
Ms. Gray?
Thank you.
Yeah, just a general question on this. I know with the four categories and all of the different qualifications that you have to follow, was just wondering, is one of the qualifications that you have to spend all of the money in one calendar year, two calendar years, or is it something that can be in the city's accounts but be spread out over, over years?
The general guideline is, is that the money needs to be allocated by the end of 2024.
So, just allocated?
And then it has to be spent by the end of 2026.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, we, it's not a long timeframe, but there is a little bit of constraint on that.
Can you, can you hire people to oversee things with them?
Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Holt, and I know, I know that you are going to, but my experience with the government assistance that has been provided in connection with the, with the pandemic has been, and I've been involved in a number of organizations that have received government assistance, is that the rules change as you go along. That, that, there's an initial set of rules, and then that gets, that morphs into something else, and then it morphs into something else, and it's, and it's ex post facto application. In other words, you thought you were doing the right thing, but then they changed the rules, and now you're not doing the right thing. So, and I think, I think you're right. I think there will be close governmental supervision over how this money is spent to make sure that it's spent in accord with whatever the latest guidance was, and, and that if it's not, they're going to want their money back at the very least. And so, and so I think, you know, and I know you agree with this, is we need to proceed carefully and diligently to make sure that, that we're complying with.
I think, you know, there's a real sensitivity on the part of the people in public works and accounting and legal, that we are really sensitive to that, because, you know, this is why that every week, you know, I seem to get a new copy of something new about a change that may have occurred or a modification or, and so I believe we'll continue to do this every week throughout this whole process, just for that reason, because, just because now we've already begun to see just how they're doing it. We're getting a little more information every week.
And whatever we do needs to fall squarely within the guidance. We don't need to be pushing the envelope on, on this kind of thing, because I think we'll get in trouble. And I know y'all agree with that, I just.
Well, Mr. Holt, I know there is great interest amongst members of the council to stay abreast and apprised and aware of the nuances within this particular set of resources. So, in light of that, I'm going to ask Mr. Davis with the Finance Committee to plan with you a series of meetings if necessary, so that we can ensure that A, we understand all that needs to be understood, and B, that we have an opportunity to have input prior to it being placed on our council's agenda.
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. And thank you all. This is a great opportunity, a great opportunity for us to really catch up on some things that we need to catch up on and help business owners, residents who are in need. And so, I look forward to learning more as to how we can move forward positively.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
That's it?
Okay. Come to the end of the agenda, any announcements from members of the council? Any from the administration? All right, we'll see each other at 10:30.